Okay, this time we're gonna make you go back into session.
Misty's running late and if it's okay with the board, Alvin gets in here, she's our insurance agent, and we'd like to talk a little bit about the health insurance, some ACA mandates that's coming up, if that's pleasing with you.
Hello?
Hi. I've been talking with Kim, we've been back and forth on what county policy's saying, what the Affordable Care Act is mandating, and we all went to apply some couple of weeks ago. And biggest thing, you know, that I think that Graham County needs to do to get in compliance with the ACA mandates is looking at your part-time employees. And this Affordable Care Act has a lot of complicated formulas. But in a nutshell, if you have an employee that works what they call an equivalent full-time position, even though you may have them determined to be part-time, they work 20 hours this week, 15 hours the next week, 35 hours, and I think the jail will be a typical at-the-down cycle of part-timers going over and under that 30-hour mandate. You have to put them on health insurance. If you fail to do that, and they make a, and they meet the full-time equivalent of 30 hours or more with a minimum of a 90-day, 90-day look-back.
Yes.
And if you miss, mess up on one, your penalty is $2,000 per employee times the number of employees that you have less than 30 for one. Boo-boo. And real easy to do. And if you, for example, if you've got 200 employees and you mess up with 100 employees and they meet that 30-hour threshold, your penalty's $2,000 times 200 employees, which is $400,000. They give you a credit out of the goodness of their heart of 2,000 times 30 employees, which is $60,000 deduction off of that. So one mess-up could cost the county $220,000 penalty.
So we have $220,000.
I'm just, that was actually made from my brain.
You can't remember part-time.
I'm just using that as an example to let you know how to deal with that.
That's the number, yeah.
It was easy for me. But it's a serious thing. And so, you know, your department heads have to understand how destructive that this could be for Graham County that supervises part-time employees. The board needs to know how destructive it could be, you know, if they don't stay on top of it. And I know that, you know, we've talked about it, but I think it's really important that, you know, all the department heads really meet, talk about this, understand, you know, what an issue that this is. And I think that your personnel policy probably will need to be revised a little bit. I know Kim's been working on that to get in tune with that. But in the meantime, while y'all are deciding to do that, I think that y'all need to...
Make sure it doesn't happen?
Yes, yes.
Just make sure it doesn't.
And it's, I mean, you're talking, it'll allow you to go back 90 days to do a look-back to determine, but this goes into effect January the 1st. So I think any potential employees that are gonna start teetering up and down with that, and you will have some that you really can't control depending on, you know, what department that it's in. I think it would be cost-effective for you to consider the possibility of just going ahead and putting those on the health insurance because the cost to put them on is not gonna be anything compared to messing up on one. And it is if you mess up on one employee. And, I mean, it's a very, very, very stiff penalty if you mess it, so.
On our end, I've got it, you know, I did it two, two different ways. I did it per year, I did it 90 days. It's coming at pretty much the same, the one-year versus the 90-days, so.
We're determining the full-time equivalence is what it's called.
Yeah, it's not, it's not drastic. The changeover that we've had in the one department helps some. You know, you have your cemetery crew that's going on. You have your, some departments, the jail, you have, that's going on. Can't determine transport, unfortunately. That, that is just, you cannot determine that. And there's some departments you cannot determine. And I will give you a list. When I'm talking about the personnel policy, I need to get with my department heads, and we need to really be strong before I bring you that policy in here.
The cemetery workers, we can hire additional part-time workers if that's something we need to do to eliminate it there. Part of that problem for them is they'll give you seasonal employees, but these employees at the cemetery go beyond the seasonal timeframe to where you can't even get out from under that loophole there. And, I mean, if these mandates are, and what they'll give you, seasonal temporary things, I mean, they're very strict, and most of them are designed to force you to put them on. But there are a little bit of wiggle room in there.
There are loopholes, and I can go in now a little bit part of it.
We have cemetery workers that are on, on.
Part waivers. But you gotta, you gotta be a little cautious on the, on the exchange because if the feds come in, see your people who qualify for our insurance that is on the exchange, if I don't offer that and they don't sign a waiver, I have to have a waiver signed, which I've been covering, the basis is pretty good, but I just have to really cross the Ts and dot the Is there strongly, or we get trouble on that end too. So there's lots of little loopholes in the ACA that's, that's really complex when you start getting in it. But we're trying really, really hard on the ACA where the exchange is concerned.
And what that means, they're going to the facility to get health insurance.
Yeah.
Instead of through the county. And then that automatically, it's not an oddity, but it's the same as triggers when they say they work for Graham County. So then we have to explain why they went to them and not here to avoid. And then they're gonna check and see if they're justified in penalizing us or if it was a credible thing for them to be allowed to go on.
Yeah. If they say, why didn't you take the free county insurance that you were eligible for instead of coming out to the exchange? Yeah. And, and what he could take the insurance here, go back out to the exchange on the months that he's not working. So it gets a little bit confusing for the employee, for us. Yeah, it's, it's really complex, I mean.
Where you go in the temporary, you get into seasonal, you get into part-time, you get into part-time, full-time equivalency. I mean, it's, they've got it covered just about every which way you go.
That's it, that we're talking about right now?
And I think on that temporary seasonal employees, we determined that the cemetery workers are actually working longer and don't actually qualify for that category where you can exclude offering under that because they went outside that threshold of their timeframe and we couldn't place a loan. How many months, is it nine months?
Nine.
Yeah, and I think they were six months each.
I'm looking at 10 on this list, which y'all got to go back, so we're looking at 10 people.
I went ahead in the budget for 14, 15, and we kind of did a look back when I was doing the budget so I could see who were on the budget, what everybody's following, like in the jail and in the cemetery. And I went ahead and tried to increase the budget line items to account for that, knowing that January and one would pay, I could put some of those off, just to be safe.
So we're not talking.
What's the bringing up mark on that here for 10 days? I'm sure it's not too, about the.
No. The problem is, is at first everybody thought, oh, well, we'll just not cover anything. You know, and then they said, well, you mess up on one and you've got the health.
Well, they don't have major control over the.
No, it's forced, the, the health insurance, I think, that we pay for the employees is like $174 a month.
Forty-six thousand.
So maybe 10, if you had 10, it's about $60,000, $56,000 in that amount of increase.
And the seasonal is 120-day work period, and if they go beyond that, which they do.
There's no exclusion.
No, not for layers that they're working. They're, they're going into that full-time, part-time equivalency is, you know.
If they work nine months. What if they don't want it?
If they want it.
There's not a waiver?
They sign a waiver if they don't want it.
But then if they go out on the exchange, they're not allowed, if they were to qualify for subsidy, that's disallowed. They can not, cannot get a subsidy for it.
They would need to understand that.
Yeah.
Well, that's where the law comes in. She'll have to fix me up something that states they are aware that they cannot receive a sense to see if they turn down this insurance. That's where Donna's gonna have to come in.
But, yeah, because we pay 100% of it, and therefore we meet the guidelines of affordability for them. So if they go under the extraordinary factor where maybe it's affordable for them, then, you know, they're not eligible for that subsidy, but if they take it, you know, it's, it's not gonna be off the backs of the county.
Yeah.
But again, even at the, even with those waivers, excuse me, I don't think there'll be that many that will not want it, if any. But you still have to be careful, you have to offer it to make it available to, I believe there's many numbers, say the 95 or 99% of the employees. And even if we say up to 95, we still should be able to, there were one that didn't want it, but really have to be careful there because, you know, you might get through one way and then something on another one catch up with you, 'cause you still have to have that percent.
And then when I start on the personnel policy change, I want to be very careful in the wording and put in every single thing of the ACA. I don't want to leave out one wording, and that's why I haven't came to you to change it because I want to be sure that I have everything from the state government, from the IRS, and everything else in our personnel policy when it deals with the health insurance on this. I want the exact wording to be put in there when we go to make that change regarding this, this subject of offering the health insurance to anybody that goes over the 30 hours, you know, that's considered eligible, not, I'm not gonna say over 30, eligible to receive health insurance.
And that's at 30 hours.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's 30 hours and above equivalency average. So that's why, you know, somebody can work 20 hours, 15, and then 40, but that average, if it's 30 hours or above, they have to be offered it. And you have to do it within a correct timeframe. I mean, it's immediate, it's not, they give you that look-back period, that stabilizing period, and the minimum's 90 days. But Kim said she went back a year to see, you know, which way was cost-effective to the county. But the further back that you go for that look-back, when you put an employee on, effective, let's say, January the 1st, and she had a six-months look-back instead of the 90 days, when you put them on, you have to leave them on for the same length of time going forward as you had that look-back you kept in front of. So you don't wanna put yourself out there too far. And so the minimum on that's a 90-day look-back, so Kim and I talked on that, and she's gonna do the 60 or 90 days only yet. So that when you put them on, you only have to, and if you just like hired somebody late, you know, for the cemetery and then put them on, and cemetery's over with, where you can't just drop their insurance and say, go undercover now, have to leave them on there for the same equivalent time, which would be 90 days minimum to have it covered. So you don't want your look-back to go back so far that going forward, you're gonna have to carry them a longer period of time than you're gonna live with if it's a safe money.
Well, I was curious to see how the numbers would fall.
Right.
Versus the three months as far as their average hours. That was my curiosity.
Right.
I'm curious. So I, I was curious to see how their numbers would fall. And they're falling the same period, so that tells me they are eligible because of the way their number of hours was falling. So that put them in the 30, that put them in the bracket, so there's no way you could pull them out and say they was not eligible for insurance. That was my curiosity, not that they were not eligible, but I was curious to see how their hours were falling, and, and there's no way they're not gonna fall inside that bracket of offering them the insurance. But I was just curious, any, any way that, to check the hours. And, and the curiosity was, was it gonna fall within the year's time versus the 90-days time? And, and it failed the same within, within hours of each other, within three hours. So yes, it was falling, there's no way that you can pull it away from it. So it'd be a lot of, regardless of whether, whether it was a year out or 90 days out, those same employees was falling in that same cycle.
Yes. And I was concerned with the way that that law read going, you know, if you do the wind look-back six months, you have to have them with the same months of credit going forward. If they quit their job, you know, are we required to keep them on? Because, I mean, you know, when you read that, just to take it for what it is, you still have to keep them on six months even though they're still not working. But I found a thing in there for it, so as long as they're an employee. So, you know, if they quit before that period forward is, then, you know, we're okay to terminate their coverage then if they quit their job or something. But, but I think for the temporary seasonal, you know, would be cost-effective to keep them on that 90-day period because you're really gonna be laying them off, they're not quitting because they're working now. So, I mean, it can be cost, I mean, really expensive for y'all, but something you need to be aware of. But the main thing is to make you aware of what stiff penalties that it is if you don't comply. And I strongly recommend, you know, that y'all have a department head meeting and make it mandatory with all that. Well, I know Kim's talked to several already, but I think it's really important that everybody has questions and answers to where they understand the seriousness of it and the penalty that be on the county if these department heads didn't stay in close watch with the time sheets and stuff.
I have one other quick question, Colleen. Are there any modifications we're going to need to make to meet the affordability clause for dependents?
No, we were, we were looking on that. And back in 2010, you know, they, you know, they've made changes to all of this, and so I was able to get a February 14th version. And we have to make the minimum essential coverage available to employees and their dependents, but they're very clear that a spouse is not considered a dependent for the purpose of this act. And then it says that you have to make that coverage affordable. And one thing that we were reading contradicted the other, whether it had to be affordable to the employee or affordable to the employee for their dependents. But the updated version mentions employee only, but you do have to have the minimum essential coverage made available to the employee, employee's dependents other than the spouse. And in a nutshell, you're required to offer dependent coverage, but you're not required to offer a health plan that covers a spouse. So that affordability didn't seem to apply there for the dependent coverage like we were thinking last week. And it was only for the employee, employee. And if you chose to make the employee pay a portion of their premium, you cannot charge them any more than the 98% of their household income. And different ways of obtaining that. Kim's got that list on what we could do there if you decided to do that. But no matter what, I mean, that's the maximum that you could ever charge an employee on their cost. But we do 100%, so that's not applicable there. We offer for the dependent coverage, so we've, we've got that covered, and then we have, we exceed the minimum essential coverage requirements. So we should be good with all of that. It's just this part-time that's critical right now and needs to be squared away by January the 1st.
Now, she had that, I think, this week, she should have that list.
This is not affecting government, it's affecting the same.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's affecting the same one. Because we had to take a review of that.
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's complicated, and, you know, when they get to talking about all of this stuff, you know, you have to really concentrate when you're reading the parts of the law because it kinda meshes itself together to make the minimum essential coverage there versus the affordability and, yeah, Lord. I mean, it gets to be a headache, you really have to concentrate on it.
It's confusing.
It is. Because, and they got all kinds of different formulas for each thing that you have to look at, so. But anyway, I.
Can you that for Colleen, be it up?
My one way of voting for our department.
I, I can go with them to make it when I answer any questions that they got. I don't care if they want me to, but, okay. Well, you can just let me know, do y'all have any more questions? Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Misty, can you talk to him, Bob?
Certainly. Thank you, and good afternoon. I provided in your packet a copy of some legislation that has been handed down that says the 91 centers have to have a backup solution in place by 2016. Now, that means that we have to have it placed to sit in our 91 calls in the event that, for some reason, we are unable to take those calls. Along with that call, we have to be able to send information, the phone number, everything that we give, and have a backup plan in case we're not able to help. So last year, Jackson and Swain County submitted for grants from the 91 board to start a plan to back up each other. Now, at that point, when I found out about that, I wanted to be a part of it and kind of have a three-way dependency between us. Our three counties, right now, are using the same equipment. We use the same companies, and we've agreed to use that equipment. And I think last week, the Jackson-Swain project, when, the meeting that they had last week, I think they had orders for to continue using the same equipment that I'm gonna be using. Now, in doing that, I see an opportunity for us to get grant money to be able to fund that and possibly to even be able to fund a new center. Swain County did get two grants, they got one grant for a new center, and the next year they got a grant for the technology, which was amazing that they got in both years. So this year, I'm asking for funding to hire consultants to compile the grant as well as to oversee the program and submit the grant and oversee the entire project. I've talked with a few individuals and some of my peers to see how they have done their solutions and what's been done in the past. And several of the emails I've gotten back has pointed to Mission Critical Partners, that's someone they've been using or looking to use in the future. I've spoken with Mr. Penny, Philip Penny with Mission Critical. He advised that he was gonna be out in the area anyway, and he was able to be present at our meeting tonight for any kind of questions that we might have. Just information that will be viable for you to make a decision. But what I'm asking for is funding for the, the grant writing itself. The other funding would be rolling to the grant. So to my knowledge, the funding that you can't would be liable for is the grant writing itself and, and to compile that grant. That being said, I'd like to interview Philip Penny and Brent Boykin from Mission Critical. If we have any questions for them or for me. Would this have been? Okay, Philip? If y'all aren't curious to, to tell us about some of the projects you've had, some of the projects that's planned and what you're gonna do, what you're starting with.
Okay, sure. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Philip Penny, I'm a business development in Mission Critical Partners. Our office is in State College, Pennsylvania. I have a local office in Raleigh, North Carolina. What brings me here today is we are doing a grant-funded project in Haywood County. We have a meeting there tomorrow. Additionally, we have a grant-funded project, like Mr. said, in Jackson and Swain County. So we have written a number of these grants. There is absolutely nothing that can tell you that if you submit a grant that you're gonna be 100% guaranteed that you'll get it. There is a little bit of an arc to, to the grant-writing process. We, last year, there was $1.5 billion awarded in grants by the 91 board, and we're administering $10.5 billion of those projects. So they awarded four projects, and we're doing three of those, three out of four projects. We have, the year before that, we did Rockingham County, we did Burke County, we've done Henderson County, all these are grant-funded projects. And then between Burke and Rockingham, the two of those were $7 billion apiece, and Henderson was $4 billion. This year, along with the Haywood County grant, we, we did get a $7 billion grant from Fodere County for a three-county consolidation project. It's a little different here, you're not looking at a three-county consolidation project, but what you are looking at here is to be able to share resources and to be able to support each other in, in sort of a regional backup. And that certainly makes, makes it attractive to the 91 board as we move forward and try to provide grant dollars for the project. And I'll be glad to take any questions.
Do you think it would be more, more likely since we're a tier-one county or these other counties to, to receive the grant?
Tier-one counties are absolutely in the target area for these grant fundings. The board has a little saying, the grant money's for the needy, not the greedy. So if you have a big fund balance and you're asking for money, chestnut, you're not gonna get it. So it's for these smaller counties that can't support things like the building project. You just, you just don't have the resources for it. So Graham County is certainly in the target for what the grant money goes for. It's, it's, like I said, tier-one counties are very high on their list.
What would be the cost?
Um, I don't, you know, Misty and I just started talking, we, last week, week before last, a little bit. We have an end-of-the-year company meeting in State College. I was tied up there for four days last week. We talked at the end of, week before last. So I've not been able to give her a, a fair price, but I will give her that, you know, based on recommendations from this board. I know you're not gonna approve a project without knowing what the cost is gonna be. But if you're, if this board is interested in moving forward, then by all means, I would give Misty a proposal with the number, with the dollar amount. And we, what, what we do is we, we come in and help with the grant process. Misty will do some of it, we'll help her organize it, prepare it, get it together, and then we submit it, and then we submit a budget. And within that, within that grant, there's a technology budget, there's a construction budget, there's an architect budget, there's a consulting budget. So our fees are built in that project. So our fees are built in that project. So under the grant, consulting fees are charged there, not. So your upfront money would be the dollars you paid for the technical assistance for the grant writing.
So one of the first things we would need to do is set up a piece of property.
You, sorry?
Set aside a piece of property. We have to do that before the grant's written?
No, absolutely not. No, I mean, you can just, conceptually, you can say, you know, we have three sites that we're thinking about, and we have land that we could build a structure, a facility on. But when we submit the grant, you don't have to have a piece of property that this is where it's going to be. Matter of fact, when we did the DARE property, we put in the application that we would identify three sites that would be acceptable to the committee. So all that's sort of determined after you get your grant.
Any other questions? Anybody? We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, do you want to go on and talk a little bit?
Yeah, just about, thank you. You know, I'm going to go back and, first of all, I appreciate the freedom to talk to y'all and hope that we can have a good working relationship with, you know, with my department and, you know, even though of course, my best effort to save our tax dollars that we can on what we're doing. And this was brought to my attention about the second day that I found out I was going to be a hopeful jail, and I know we had this problem, and I'm glad that Pauline laid it out and backed it. Well, I didn't have the specifics, the importance of what happened, but at this time, I don't see any way possible to keep my part-time people. They're making more money than much of us in here right now. They're getting more, fifty, sixty hours a week, every week. And, you know, I've lost a few things around in my head, you know, some stuff that take the pressure off of that, but will turn things I mentioned to Kim and Rebecca the other day about hiring some more part-time people. But if any way possible, like what Pauline said, if you save fifty, we're going to get four more people full-time, and put two more, one on each shift, and make three in the jail, but we haven't had to. These people could be, we won't have to get them through share standards or nothing, which will decrease our training cost a little bit with them, but they'll be doing answering the phone and taking care of, they can help us supervise inmates and transport inmates, settle involuntary commitments and stuff that's killing our budget. That way, we still have enough people left at the detention center, you know, to take care of the inmates. And, you know, it puts us down where we could probably use, you know, we can work from three to five people part-time versus the other two, but still be in the same, seven people will I be able to take, you know, running the partial department the best we could at the time during this budget restraint. I mean, I know that is, the dollar, you know, the dollars are bottom figure, and that's what we've got to worry about, but we still got to do what we need to have done. But Greg's mentioned that we've got the opportunity to maybe contract these involuntary commitments, which is going to take a big look out there to see if that, if it hangs out, if it don't, it don't. But anyhow, like I said, the new hire that I hired this week, got sixty-two hours this first week, and everybody's sick, plus we had several committed, seven. And they put a big strain on full-time and on part-time people. And nobody there this week has got less than fifty hours, everybody that works for me pretty much. But, say, you know, it's a big astronomical at what happens if we're not in compliance of this insurance deal. So I did, I've got one full-time and one part-time position. Today advertised in favor to get that going by Friday, and that's just going to be enough just to get me to the operating range, not by longer cushion range. So, as I said, the time sheets and the payroll tells the story. You are pretty, I guess, newer people probably haven't seen my life, I was getting out of our budget, but it's phenomenal. I've counted for housing and everything else that's strange. It's, I'd like to have y'all consider this, and I said we'd give, we had the department in leak. I'm already a few steps ahead, because I've done heard what Pauline has to say, and I said that'll have to be considered, I think, before more full-time positions to get a better handle on this, to keep anything back from happening. So, thank you for your time, and, thank you.
I'll just elaborate, if you would like, just real quick on what Andrew said. Been talking with some other counties. There's a company called E4S who, they provide services in other counties across North Carolina. They do non-voluntary, involuntary commitment of transportation for other counties. They are trying to put together a proposal for Western North Carolina as they reach. And we are still waiting some numbers to see if it can be a viable solution for us out here. First indication is they seem to think they can save, let's say, forty percent on what we are currently expanding in transportation. Next couple of days, Andrew and I'll be getting in touch with you, trying to get some schedules together to have them talk and come out and look at our numbers. But ultimately, they need to approach this from the seven western counties here to make it work for them to open up shop here, move vehicles here, and hire personnel here. Where they currently operate, Wake County, those areas, you know, that county's big enough to support them having an operation in just that county. But, you know, they currently have security staff in some hospitals, all their staff is trained with the league. They say they can save some money. We're all ears to hear what they have to say. I'll keep you updated as that information. And I will you to... Since I'm new, I'm going to go ahead and get to the board. But I'm excited to do this, I am. The most important thing to me, it is working the relationship I believe to trust. I think I speak for our whole board when I say, you know, I appreciate the employees, all of them, their loyalty to the county government and to the people that we serve. Now, this board's going to be perceived in different ways by the public, and it will be effective, ineffective. And that perception is sheltered, I believe, in large on the conduct of the ethic, honesty, and the actions of our employees. My personally, my biggest fear ever since I was elected was that to be able to perceive the President of Fettering. We've got the opportunity to establish a great, a document with this county in particular. If we don't work together as a team, it never happens. Responsibility ultimately starts here with us, the vehicles, the office. I believe we should hold everybody accountable, whether it's through, you know, bragging on when they do something good, you know, discipline, whatever is necessary. But I myself only deal with truth, whether it's a wipe on my face or a doctor toe sheet, a seat will never get us what we need completely. I don't believe. But with all that said, I really truly believe we've got a great staff. I've worked with them for ten years, I can account for that. But I'm begging everybody that we fix the roles, we need here, together, we'll work together, and I believe that we can win this campaign for, already that I'm glad to be here.